Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. Any conflict of interest declarations? I have one, under I-1. And it's due to, before I was on council, I did a remodel on this facility. And out of abundance of caution, due to money owed, I'm going to recuse myself. Changes or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, no changes to the agenda this evening?
Thank you. B, public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. There is no one in our audience. So do we have anyone in the virtual world?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No one is raising their hand at this time.
Give anybody a moment, just in case. Seeing none, we'll move right into communications. C-1, Citrus Fair ramp.
Mayor, members of council, in the council packet, there is a communication from Ms. Millie Thomas. The communication is addressed to our state senator, Mike McGuire. This correspondence was in response to a communication that was directed from Ms. Thomas to our Public Works Subcommittee, most specifically in regards to Citrus Fair being under the jurisdiction of Caltrans, Citrus Fair Drive, excuse me, and particularly the median. And there was a fairly robust discussion about the median, the maintenance of the trees and the landscaping. And Ms. Thomas volunteered to write a letter to our state senator requesting the assistance of Caltrans, or requesting his assistance in facilitating Caltrans to provide additional maintenance of that median strip. And she agreed to write a letter. I think it was kind of nice advocacy on behalf of the city. And we just put it in as communication because of the original context for that was directed towards the city.
Thank you, David. D, student liaison report. We do not have a student liaison at this time. Have no proclamations. F, no presentations. Moving into G, the consent calendar. Would anyone like to pull any items on the consent calendar? Seeing none? Do we have a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar. If there is any comment on the consent calendar from the public.
Want me to open it up to the public? It is open right now for it. They wanted to pull an item. So. Is there a specific item that you're wanting me to?
Oh, no, I didn't. I just saw people settling in. I just want to make sure that we won't drop them again.
I think they're here for I.
Yes, I think so too, but you never know.
Okay, so we have a first and a second on the consent calendar? Thank you.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wolter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you. H, your public hearings, and we have no public hearings. I, new business, is what I am recusing myself from. I will read the heading, and then I will pass it over to the vice mayor. It's I-1, resolution ordering the property located at 1215 South Cloverdale Boulevard to connect to the sanitary sewer system pursuant to the Cloverdale Municipal Code, Section 13.16.040.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let the record reflect that the mayor has left the dais. And I'm just going to remind council members and the people out there that want to comment on this. We are here tonight to discuss whether that property of 1215 should be allowed to hook up to the city services of sewer. We're not here to discuss the pricing, the fees, or anything else. Just a yes or no, should we allow them to hook up to the sewer? With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to staff to give us a staff report. Then I'm going to bring it back to the dais for any questions, and then I'll open it up for public comment. So David, is this yours or Kevin's item?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think this is a team effort, but I'm going to give the council an initial overview of the item tonight. And I will rely on my team to address any specific questions that may arise during the discussion of this item. As you indicated, Vice Mayor, the item tonight is entitled, "The Resolution Ordering the Property Located at 1215 South Cloverdale Boulevard to Connect to the Sanitary Sewer System pursuant to the Cloverdale Municipal Code, Section 13.16.040." Staff's recommendation is for council to adopt the resolution that was included in your packet. In terms of background, the property at 1215 South Cloverdale Boulevard is a commercially zoned property. It currently supports two private businesses that are tenants to the building owner. The Cloverdale Municipal Code does provide a set of comprehensive regulations that relate to addressing the city sanitary sewer system. For the most part, most properties located within the city are connected to the city sanitary sewer system. And that's for good reason, obviously, for protection of water quality, for ensuring that sanitary sewage is properly treated, and also because of the state regulations around disposal of sanitary sewer materials. This particular system has, or particular property, has relied on the use of a private septic system. When the most recent tenants sought a certificate of occupancy, there was a determination made by the Well and Septic Division of the Permit Resource Management Department, or PRMD at the time. It's now referred to as Permit Sonoma, that the septic system could continue to be utilized under certain conditions. The conditions that were provided by Permit Sonoma were based on generation of waste material totaling no more than 50 gallons per day. And along with that, there was a timeline that was provided by Permit Sonoma that this use would be allowed for a five-year period. Basically, a findings letter, which was included in your packet for reference. Every indication from Permit Sonoma is that they would much prefer to not be the regulatory agency for septic systems where, for properties located within the city, and would much prefer that properties connect to our sanitary sewer system. With that said, the, based on the desire for the business enterprises to move fairly expeditiously at the time when they were seeking a certificate of occupancy, they were allowed to continue its use under those conditions. Since that time, we've received multiple communications about issues with the septic system. We've called, the staff has called Permit Sonoma. And there has been, you know, various ongoing code enforcement investigations and review. And our determination, it's necessary for the property owners to now connect to the city sanitary sewer system. We, in addition, receive reports of discharge, of overflow from the building to the septic system to adjoining properties. The State Water Resource Control Board, or the Regional Water Quality Control Board, did issue a notice of violation, which is also included in your packet. And I think that supports the staff's recommendation that it's time for the property owner to seek connection to the city sanitary sewer system. There was previously plans developed by the engineer retained by the tenants, or existing tenants, for connecting to the city sewer system. But they were never formally submitted to the city by way of either an encroachment permit or a formal request to connect to the city sewer system. As part of connection, obviously, there is necessity to pay the appropriate or applicable development impact fees for sewer capacity. And no, that's not why we're here tonight, but that is an integral component to the connection. Given the issues with the septic system not functioning properly based on the amount of waste discharge, which is very difficult for city staff to manage, it's, we really don't have a mechanism to regulate, you know, the amount or extent of waste discharge from the building. And given the issues that have been brought to our attention relative to the operation of the septic system, staff does recommend that it's, council take the action to adopt the resolution requiring the property owner to connect to the city sanitary sewer system. The resolution that's included in your packet sets forth the requirements for connection and the timeline for doing so. The reason we bring this to you tonight is because municipal code does provide that the city council has the authority to take this action. So I'll kind of pause there, Vice Mayor, members of council, and certainly entertain any questions that you may have regarding this recommended action this evening.
Thank you, David. Council members, I'm bringing it back to the dais to see if you have any clarifying questions at this point. Councilmember Bagby?
Yeah, just a couple of things to clarify. It's my understanding from the reading that this isn't a question of whether or not to allow them to hook up to our sewers, that they had five years of requirement, and they're required to, and the date is September 23, 2023. Is that, did I understand that correctly in the reading?
That's correct, Councilmember Bagby. The findings report that is included in your packet that was issued by Permit Sonoma provided a five-year timeline from when the initial request was to continue to utilize the septic system. So it is, as you indicated, September 15th.
September 15th.
Right. With that said, the municipal code does provide for a time window of 90 days upon adoption of the resolution setting forth the requirement. So that would, in essence, give the property owner some additional time than what's provided for in the findings letter provided by the Permit Sonoma.
The Regional Water Quality Board, that was dated June 9th, and it said that they had 15 days. It also just, in my reading, it looked like while they can remedy the situation by meeting our five-year deadline, which is fairly generous, they're still subject to possible fines and charges by the Regional Water Quality Board for the illegal releases. Is that correct?
That is my understanding. Councilmember Bagby, I want to note that the 15 days that's referenced in the letter from the Regional Water Quality Control Board is requiring a response within 15 days.
And do we know if they responded?
We do not know whether they've responded. I do note that the property owner, Ms. Hathaway, I think, has joined us virtually, and she may be able to respond to that question.
Those are my questions for now.
Thank you. Council members, anything? Well, just one. Could you just review that time date again? You said 90 days from the date of the resolution? That we approved the resolution?
That's correct, Vice Mayor. There's a provision language in the resolution that's in your packet that sets forth a 90-day timeline to connect to the city sanitary sewer system. It's kind of the second-to-last, whereas in the resolution. And that's related to the requirements in the municipal code and state attorneys.
We're talking sometime around November, beginning of... David, do you want to add something to that?
Oh, David actually covered it. I was going to say those 90 days also come from the requirement from that section that cited 1316040C from your municipal code, which states that, which has those, the 90-day after action by the city council, after notice. Actually, it says official notice by the city council. Now, that municipal code is from like 1988. Usually, you would have sections now not require councils to take action, just simply stating you're required to hook up to sewer. But in this case, our municipal code does state that, and we just want to make sure that, obviously, that all requirements are met.
And in terms of notice, there's a letter in the, a draft letter in the packet. You'll notice it's undated because we want to wait for council to consider the resolution tonight. If council approves the resolution, the letter will be appropriately dated, either August 9th or August 10th, and be, and provide the requisite notice as provided for in the resolution.
Thank you, David. If there's a number of questions from the dais, I'm going to open it up to Ms. Hathaway. And Alice, we have a time allotted for three minutes, so if you could hold your comments that long. But I believe there was a question by Councilmember Bagby as far as whether you responded to a letter that was issued by the Water Quality Control Board. So when you speak to us, if you could speak to that letter as well. That being said, Michael, would you please allow Ms. Hathaway to speak?
I'm going to go ahead and give permissions to callers with the last four. One second.
Is there anyone else here this evening representing the owner? Or is it just general comments? Just raise your hand if you're with Anne. Anne, if you can unmute your phone. It might be muted.
Anne, to do so, you have to press star six. Or whoever caller 0553 is, please press star six. Anne, it looks like you're raising your hand. You have a microphone connected, and you're successfully unmuted, but we have...
Well, Anne, you go ahead and work through your situation. In the meantime, we're going to take other public comment. So, Michael, if you want to set the clock for three minutes and call us, call on those that have their hands raised, please.
Definitely. Next up with their hand raised is Jason Horst. I'm going to go ahead and give him your permission to speak.
I appreciate it. Good evening. My name's Jason Horst. I am council for Alexander Valley Organics. Jamie King and Diana Schreiner, who are tenants in the building in question. I think I can speak to at least some of the questions that council has had. From my understanding, the letter in question was responded to, and that there has been back-and-forth correspondence from their recipients who include folks other than Ms. Hathaway as well. I think that, and I was just speaking with Ms. Hathaway, from, you know, from our perspective, the issues that I think council should be aware of are, first, that the, I believe, Mr. Thompson has gotten a set of findings from our engineer. I realize that there was a comment earlier that this isn't the place to talk about the fee, but I wanted to just recognize that there have been some findings provided that relate to the fee. And I know that Ms. Hathaway wanted to request to this body that the fee be as low as possible in consideration of the challenging process that this has been. I will say that some of the reasons for the delay in the hookup relate to the challenge this has been and the fact that this property has been the subject of active litigation on a variety of fronts. But that we have made more progress towards resolution, in particular on this issue, than there's been in the past around it. And that my understanding is Ms. Hathaway has gotten bids and solicited bids and actually gotten on the calendar for a contractor as soon as was available, which is late October. And so what we would request is that the council actually make the order effective on September 25th rather than on August 9th or 10th because there's a concern that despite the fact that work is already scheduled, it would, it would be cutting it a little close. And for someone like my clients who, you know, have no fault here, they would be subject to getting shut down if there were issues with the property becoming no longer available as a result of that 90-day window closing before the work can be completed. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Jose, is it possible, if we approve this resolution this evening, to extend that 90-day period?
Well, currently, we, actually, the 90 days will go past the September 25th that the county has given. So that's past that date. I know in talking with staff as well, when, I mean, staff also works with folks trying to connect. So if the work is starting to be done, if it's not just on that date, I know that staff is also flexible in making sure that, you know, not being, not onerous with penalties or anything like that, if the work is actually getting done. But I would point out that the actual resolution goes past that September date with the 90 days.
Thank you. Michael?
I had to try Anne again.
You join us now?
I just sent you another... There's a bar moving up and down if we're able to hear sound. Likely what you'll need to do in Zoom, there's a little microphone. You'll need to click on the little up arrow and ensure that you have selected correct microphone when it's operational. There's nothing I can do on our end.
Why don't we go ahead and take on another comment then?
Now, no one else is raising their hands online? If there's any members of the public here that would like to speak? No other comments, Vice Mayor?
Anne, we're going to give you a couple more minutes, and then we're going to have to move on with this item.
Anne, I'm going to go ahead and promote you to panelist, which we wouldn't typically do, but it might give you different permissions. Prompt if you can go ahead and accept that. All right, Anne, we're not able to connect with you via Zoom, so our assistant city manager is going to give you a phone call directly. I hope you're able to hear that. I put it next to a microphone so we can hear you.
Yes, Anne, you're on speaker.
Thank you very much.
Well, Anne, I'm glad that you finally got through. So we heard from one gentleman already, and if he could just share with us your thoughts on this?
Of course. We've been involved in some pretty serious litigation, and it's been ugly. And what I'm questioning is, I would like you to give me a very reasonable fee. I've contacted the contractor. He is available the end of October. He's busy as the devil until then, and I'll look for Zura. True simple. I'll hook it up. You say I can hook it up, I'll hook it up.
Is that all you have to say, Anne?
Well, not really, but it's been a very, a very long and ugly process. That's the thing that's been so bad about it. And there've been a lot of extenuating circum, extenuating circumstances. I'm not used to this. I've got an echo on this thing. If you have any questions, you ask.
Anne, if you mute your device that you're using to watch Zoom, you'll be able to listen through just the phone. That's why we're getting the feedback.
Anne, if you can mute your computer. Volume down.
Well, it's kind of the weekend, I'll call you. I'm not listening to it. I'm on the phone, so if that's better for me, if it's okay for you.
I think the echo's gone.
I think it is too. It's kind of visible to try and talk when you've got that echo, echo on the phone. I have been doing my darndest since I found out that all, all the, you know what's been happening. David Kelly knows what's been happening too, it's kept. And it's been quite ugly. And I'm outraged with, I have a bid to do all the work and hook up city sewer. And I'm just asking, all I'm doing is asking for a lot of the G's because they need an excessive amount of water. And I would like a lot of the G's hooked up, and I'm going to go. And say to me as soon as the contract becomes available, we'll hook it up.
Well, Anne, I hear what you're saying. And as I explained earlier, when this item was introduced, we are here this evening to simply discuss whether the city council would allow you to hook up to the services of the city. If you want to talk about fees, I'm going to ask the city manager at some point to explain the process. But we're here tonight to give a thumbs up or a thumbs down for you to hook up. you to hook up to the city services and not get into the fees.
Well, you've been pressured, everybody's been pressured and needs to look up.
Well, and we're going to give you, I think, we'll see what the vote is tonight, but you'll have permission to hook up. As far as the fees go, that's something that we're not going to discuss here this evening.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
But I think it's important that we at least point you in the right direction. With that being said, is there any other comments that you'd like to make, Anne?
No, just, I need permission to hook up, and I'll get it done the end of October.
Okay. Council members, I'm bringing it back here on the dais for more comments.
I may. Mr. Mayor, just having reviewed the staff report and actually been privy to the video and seeing what the situation is, I just was, while we were trying to get hooked up with Ms. Hathaway, I just was reviewing the resolution language. And I think that the two key points are kind of toward the middle bottom that discusses the findings report issued by the Wells and Septic Division of Permit and Resource Management Department of Sonoma County on September 25th, 2018. The finding report specifies that the continued use of Septic System was only temporary and that within five years, the owner will be required to connect to adjacent sewer in Cloverdale. So that's not really at question this evening. And then the next paragraph indicates a five-year period for the property to voluntarily complete the connection in accordance with the findings report will expire on September 25th, 2023. I think that, you know, post-COVID, we as a city know what it's like trying to book contractors and know what it's like trying to book services. And while I think that we do need to clean up the ordinance language in our, the language in our own code that just doesn't necessarily bring this to the council for necessary action, I certainly understand that, you know, that's a two-unit building, and I have no interest in this impacting the tenants who have not been party to this. So I'm very happy to entertain an amendment to the resolution that would make the requirement start in September, if that is something that is within our purview as council. And so I'm looking at our city attorney, I mean, the information was very clear from the county what the timeline is, but I'm hoping that we actually have some flexibility where we can change the date so that we can accommodate the work because these aren't the only folks who are in this position trying to book people to do work like this. It's really tight right now.
Well, Councilmember Bagby, Ms. Hathaway said that she had the contractor lined up.
That's exactly, but they can't start the work until...
Yeah, so she's got them lined up and ready to go.
Yes. End of October, and so we're past the, I'm sure that the city attorney can explain this more thoroughly.
So if I may, and this is kind of the discussion that was happening, it's the end of October, today is August, really it's 90 days from today. So pursuant to municipal code, it's 90 days from today, so that kind of puts us in, what is it, September, October, November, beginning of November. So that accommodates the end of October to get that work done. And really, we're just kind of going off the 90 days from the municipal code. We know it's a little bit past what the county, but if they had an issue or the department, the Regional Water Quality Control Board had an issue, they would of course do whatever they need to do to speed that up. But we're just saying within the 90 days. That does push it outside, out of October. And if all the contractors lined up, for some reason, if there's a delay, again, staff can work with the folks to make sure, as long as the work's started, I'm sure a couple days, as long as it's going forward.
Well, then just to follow that up, I mean, maybe staff has a better date that's more realistic. The other thing I'm a little bit concerned about, too, is that we don't know what's going to happen with the weather. It's going to impact, you know, construction, a lot of construction that we all have lined up potentially for the fall. So, you know, if a date of making this effective of September 1st is palatable to staff, if they think that that's realistic, if you could maybe make a recommendation for an effective, an effective date that continues to send the message that the work needs to be complete, but we're working with the applicant as much as we possibly can.
Now, to the Vice Mayor, are you stating the effective date of the resolution for the 90-day clock to start?
I think so. I think that's what, because that's what's in our control, is that, is the resolution and the effective date.
Are there any more comments, council members?
At least a member of the public guess wants to make a comment.
Everyone can hear me. I just want to point out, I think that's actually probably a good point to make. The work's going to take probably two, two and a half weeks. I don't expect it to go longer than that, but if that timeline could accommodate that, not just the start, because like, respectfully, I have to say, anything could happen. We've had all kinds of craziness happen with this particular project. So just knowing that that, maybe doing like a three-week encumbrance of that would be great.
Mr. Vice Mayor, is there any other questions you have for Anne Hathaway? She's still on the phone right now. We'd like to get her off.
I don't have any other questions for her. If she has any for us. Like I said, I'm going to bring this back to the dais. Hopefully, a council member's going to make a motion. And then after that motion, I just want the staff to make sure that Ms. Hathaway understands the financial obligation that she's going to burden for this.
Well, actually, Mr. Mayor, yeah, the staff has not really made a, if they have a recommendation for a good date, just based on their knowledge of how long a project like this takes and what the projected, you know, if someone's lined up for early October, what would be a good date to make sure that all parties are satisfied with the outcome?
I think, just real quickly, to speak to the 90-day timelines is, again, a code requirement based on receipt of notice. And I think we could, if you, maybe a way to address this would be, when does that 90-day clock start? It could effectively be noticed on the date of the September 15th, which is the date that the regional board has set in its, in its letter or its authorization. That may be one way to ensure both meeting the 90-day timeframe and tying it to that date, so they have 90 days from the date that was set by the PRMD or Permit Sonoma. And what that does is it buys basically roughly an additional month of time between now, if we were to, if we were to adopt this resolution and notice the property owner, or, excuse me, September 25th, to, you know, basically it gives the property owner additional, you know, month and 14 days to connect once that 90-day clock starts on September 25th. With that said, it's important to note that PRMD is its own authority, and we don't have any jurisdiction or control over PRMD if they decide to take action or take a different tact or response to the Septic System that may be outside our purview, but, you know, nonetheless, if council so directs, we can, we can notice the property on, with the effective date of the 25th or sooner, depending on your desire. That would, and again, that would in essence provide some additional clock for the property owner to fully connect to the system.
That would satisfy my concerns. I would be happy to offer that resolution with that amendment when the time comes.
Thank you. Council members, any other questions?
Worse still, I'm just trying to get this right here, so we're kicking around the 90 days. The 90 days starts September 25th, correct?
That is, if that, that's what's being proposed as an amendment, right now, the 90 days...
Actually, we're proposing the 15th as the date because that's the, actually, that's the date that's mentioned in the Regional Water Quality Board letter. We have dates of both the 15th and the 25th floating around in this packet, so it's a little confusing. And so I was suggesting the first, but as city manager pointed out, the 15th is what's in the Water Quality Board's letter.
I guess the reason I'm saying that, even if it's the 15th or the 25th of September, and she's got a contractor lined up on even the end of October, that puts her well within the 90 days right there, correct? Okay.
So, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, just real quick, so the, then it would be, and maybe the simple way of doing it, the municipal code simply states that, that within 90 days after the date of official notice by the city council to do so. Doesn't really state what the official notice is, that's why we're doing a resolution. So what potentially in the now therefore be resolved, ordering it, maybe the last sentence could simply say, could simply state, official notice by the city council shall be effective on September 15th, 2023. And that way, that's when the official notice is given and the 90-day clock starts.
Councilmember Bagby, you okay with that?
Yes.
Councilmember Morganstein, any comments?
No comments, and aye.
Councilmember Bagby, would you like to make that motion with...
I'd like to offer the resolution as amended with an effective date of September 15th, 2023, a resolution ordering the property located at 1215 South Cloverdale Boulevard to connect to the sanitary sewer system pursuant to Cloverdale Municipal Code, Section 13.16.040.
Is there a second?
Second.
Michael, can we have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Start with the motioner, Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler.
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstein.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Mayor Lanza abstaining.
So with that being said, before the mayor comes back on the dais, staff, have we talked to Anne Hathaway about financial options for hooking up, if there are any?
Yeah, just to speak to the methodology that is required for addressing the applicable development impact fee for the, you know, what is referred to as the sewer connection fee or sewer capacity fee. Adopting resolutions for the fee basically sets forth that methodology. The methodology is for the property owner to submit an engineered report identifying the usage of water on a gallons-per-day basis that is in turn used to calculate the generation of wastewater on a gallons-per-day basis. As was indicated by the speaker tonight, the, there was an engineer report submitted this afternoon for the, one of the tenants of the spaces. So it provides some of the data necessary to calculate the fee as it relates to the one tenant within the building and the same analysis and data is required or would be necessary for the other tenant so that the impact fee would be based on the total usage for, or total generation of wastewater for that facility. If there are fee arrangements that the, so I guess with that said, there's a very straightforward method for calculating the applicable fee. With regard to payment of that fee, the fee is required prior to, you know, a final connection. Certainly, there are different vehicles that council can entertain. Normally, we see those fees paid, again, you know, either prior to connection or prior to certificate of occupancy. If council was so interested, we could do a fee deferral agreement that doesn't necessarily reduce the fee or change the fee. It allows for the fee to be paid over time and is recorded as a lien against the property. And so that would be something that we could have a conversation with the property owner if that's the desire to defer the agreement. There are terms and stipulations that would be included in that agreement that require its payment because, you know, ultimately, it's for capacity that our, that our current residents are paying, you know, have paid for. So, and enabling, you know, future, those impact fees are to enable, you know, future improvements to be...
And that would, David, that would require a council approval to do that?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Well, I think we covered everything pretty nicely, Anne, and staff is pleased that you, that we've been able to offer you the hookup to the services. And hopefully, we can make the finding seem as easy as possible for you. With that being said, we're going to move on and call the mayor back if there's no other questions.
We'll move on to Jay's subcommittee reports. First one is Finance, Admin and Police. Our next meeting is October 2nd, 2023.
And Sustainability, our next meeting is August 15th.
Public Works and Facilities, next meeting is August 22nd.
Doorway City and School?
Next meeting is August 21st.
And Homeless Community Advisory Group, next meeting October 9th.
Great. Any council member reports, other than Councilmember Bagby?
Submitted in and writing, and then I forgot to. Did everybody get the notice about the legislative committee? We finally regathered and met, and I'm going to give a short report out at mayor's and council members tomorrow night.
Thank you. Thank you for attending. Next one, informational reports, anything, David?
No informational reports, Mayor.
Thank you. Legislative reports, letters of support or opposition?
Mayor, members of council, including in your packet is a signed copy of the letter opposing SB 423. We discussed that at your previous meeting, and what's included in your packet is the actual signed copy that was submitted to the League of California Cities or CalCities.
Thank you, David. City manager report?
No reports, Mayor.
City attorney report?
Not anymore.
Twenty minutes past that hour.
Just a quick question. Did we get an email from the staff for mayors and council members? Did we need to take an action to designate a voting delegate that's not vice mayor or mayor? Does Mike remember? Do you remember seeing that?
I think the email says, "Or designee."
Would you like to make me the designee?
Yes, and I actually, I sent that to Michael when I told him I couldn't go, that I said, "Please make Councilmember Bagby..."
I guess so, I'm officially the designee. Okay, there we go, thank you.
And that's why I was like, "Thank you so much."
And the reason I thought about it, too, is that I think we got a subsequent email reminding us about the CalCities designating a voting member for the General Assembly, which we have time on.
That's correct, and that'll be on the next meeting.
Something on next, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Council, direction on any future agenda items? All right, seeing none? There is no one here? No one online, so meeting adjourned, 6:00. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just a quick announcement, a reminder that tomorrow evening at the Veterans Hall is the hot dogs and rods. It's something new that the vets are doing, and they're going to be doing it August, September and October, going dark for the winter months and then picking it up in the spring. But we're encouraging the Cloverdale Roadrunners, the old car club, to come and park their cars. There's free hot dogs. If you're not a member of the club, you can still come, park your car, no fee, no nothing. So it's tomorrow evening, 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
You know why I have to miss it? I'm sorry to miss the first one, but hopefully I'll make next month.
Seeing nothing else, meeting adjourned, 6:49. Thank you.